This is the planning board workshop on the mills redevelopment zoning. It's Tuesday, June 17th, and we're almost on time. I would like to say that Val Shelton is excused. She had a previously scheduled trip for, I think, leaving today and for the next 10 days. And then we have an email from Janice Rosa, and she will be out for the next couple of meetings. She is well along on her way to recovery, but is concerned about eventually completing her recovery and being available and getting a passing grade from her specialist in late August. So, we are actively seeking alternates to help us fill in these empty positions. And Melissa, if you could mention something in your...
How many?
Well, there are three positions open right now. We think we found one, so that would be helpful. Thank you. We are... The project we have in front of us for this workshop is to discuss the mill redevelopment and the zoning, and possible recommendations to the town council to change, revise, modify the zoning. George, you have some experience as chairman and some more experience, certainly more experience on the board than I have. Can you enlighten us as to how this process has worked in the past, if you're familiar with that at all? Or can you give us some guidance and wisdom from your experience? Because we've never done this. I'm not aware of this being done before.
I don't know if Diane has some experience with it or not.
Well, I'm sure Diane has. I haven't had any experience in rezoning per se, but I think it's a matter of... Again, I would take direction from Diane, but some of it's just going by common sense. We have a need to do something with those mills. I think the first step would probably look at the permitted uses that are there now and make some judgment on what we'd want to keep there, keep or not keep out of that, and then come up with other uses. I think one of the... One of the, I'll call it tricks, but one of the things we have to balance here is, you know, just because you put down a use... People have a lot of visions of what they want in these mills in terms of cleaners, car stores, restaurants. We can only put down a specific use that a developer can plan for. What that... Once he makes that development, what actually goes in for that is up to the market and what he can promote. So, the talent here would be to come up with uses that are flexible enough to sort of get to those visions, but allow a developer to make profit. I think what Val has written in her email is quite valid, that we need to ensure that this is a profitable venture for the developer as well as for us. But to answer your question, I think it's... I would start with the initial uses and then go with some guidance from Diane. I think Diane had some pretty good ideas in her content memo.
All right. That's a good starting point. Maybe Diane, if you could review for us and for the people who happen to be watching, what is permitted now in the M1 district?
Okay. I'd be happy to. If you could be with me a minute.
I guess I had, looking at Val's email, which I appreciate very much, there may be some... I have an inconsistency here that maybe you can explain. So, anyway, let's start through that. It's probably a good process to start.
Okay. Just to give you an overview, I've provided the board members with a copy of our downtown zoning map, which identifies the various zoning districts that apply to the downtown area. We have a B1 district in the vicinity of Route 108 going over Elm Street. B1 is sort of a general business district. The pink is the M1 district, which is the zone within which the mills are located, and it includes Bryant Rock properties up to the corner of Bay Road and Route 108, and then it includes the Westerly... Excuse me, the Easterly side of Route 108 encompassing properties from the Lamprey River down to the Rivermore property. And then, the rest of the downtown really is encompassed in a mixed-use zone, which is referred to as the M2 district, which includes a mixture of residential as well as retail and office uses. And there's some provisions within the downtown area that restricts commercial to the lower floor of the downtown buildings and allows residential, obviously, on the upper stories. And I think Val also alluded to that in her memo and talking about cities such as Portsmouth, and she mentioned Dover, Newburyport. The balance is, you know, our four districts, as you start heading down towards the Exeter Street, the bowl area, so to speak, and with M1 being right along the frontage of Route 108 and 152. I have put together, based on the comments we had at the last meeting, and actually we had a workshop back in March, where we did sort of a brainstorming session, and we identified uses that we felt were appropriate for the M1 district. And I went through and added a few more and provided sort of a worksheet for the planning board so that we can kind of work off of this. If you feel it's a... It should be a permitted use, you can check the box. If not, check the box there. I've also provided a column for "other," so to speak. If you feel like a use may be appropriate under certain conditions, then that could be permitted as a conditional use permit. As a starting point, as John suggested, I will go over what is currently within the M1 district. And also, I should mention that the M1 district really isn't that large and only encompasses about seven properties. And, of course, we know about Bryant Rock. The Selectwood property has just been approved for 15 units. Then the building on the corner, I believe, has, maybe Mr. Schuster could correct me, five units in it. And then, of course, along the river on the other side, we have the building that... Where the UNH bookstore, book exchange is. And the Eagles property, which I understand has been purchased by NCDC and the Town and will be incorporated into the overall mill redevelopment, and then the property, the mill property, as well as Rivermore. The purpose of the M1 district is to provide for ongoing uses of the mill buildings, but it's also recognizes that abandonment of these buildings would be a detriment to the community and to the downtown area and the waterfront. And it's recognized that we want to try to promote development in this area to enhance the quality of the downtown and to protect historic resources. The existing permitted uses include, and I'll quickly run down the list that's in our table of permitted uses. For housing, we have... Residential, we have student housing, age-restricted housing, nursing home, and then it goes into a variety of other uses. Daycares are permitted, hotels, conference centers, health clubs, marinas, retail, office, studio, service, which would be personal services, hairdresser, barber shop, or dry cleaner, something like that. Restaurants, wholesale, warehousing, light manufacturing, research and development, commercial amusement, civic uses, cultural uses, places of assembly, educational uses. And that covers...
One I think you missed was lounge.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I think that is an eat... Part of an eating and drinking establishment. But thank you, Peter. And a lounge is permitted within that area. We talked in our brainstorming session about maybe some of the uses are not that appropriate today. And we talked about maybe taking the self-storage facilities out of the mill district, because that wasn't viewed as the highest and best use of the property. We talked about the possibility of taking out dormitories, and I've deleted that from my list here. And I believe we talked about whether nursing homes would really be an appropriate use for that area, although we felt that age-restricted housing was an appropriate use, given the need for that type of housing within the community. Also, we talked about that having heavy commercial or industrial uses, although that's certainly where the mills had their heyday and those types of uses, that today, maybe they're... These buildings are obsolete and they're really not appropriate for modern-day industry and manufacturing. So, I've taken that use out of the list, but I did keep in research and development and computer data processing, which fall into the, you know, research and development and the technology area. So, with this, do you want to maybe start going down the list item by item? I've left some space on my worksheet so that if there's something I overlooked... What this is saying is, this is what's permitted. If it's not on the list, then that means that it's not permitted, and, you know, the applicant would have to go through some kind of a variance.
So, when you say multifamily housing here, is that the student housing that you mentioned?
No.
So, you...
And...
Did you purposely leave student housing?
I purposely left student housing out, because I heard time and time again that, from people, maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, that dormitories really were not an appropriate use for that area.
I agree.
So...
Just so we all understand, what we're doing tonight is making... What we're doing in this process is to make a recommendation or recommendations to the town council.
That's correct.
So, we could go through the list and kind of redline out what we think are inappropriate uses, and that could be the start of the process, I think.
Okay.
So, you have that list, the...
The list that are currently permitted?
Right.
Yes. And I probably should have made copies for everyone. Would you like me to make copies for you?
Yes.
I have a copy.
I have a copy here.
I think I had passed them out earlier at a rally meeting.
But where's the information? Did you add any? I know you've taken...
I added a couple of things that maybe were... What did I add? I added bed and break... Not bread and beck...
I have trouble with that.
I meant bed and breakfast, and...
Added museum, didn't you, or galleries?
Added museum, galleries. And that was in line with, you know, the discussions we've had about providing an opportunity for cultural spaces. If you can bear with me, I will run down and make some additional copies. I'll leave this for everyone.
And we'll just take a break here.
Getting warmed up.
Yeah, this is exciting, isn't it?
I think she cited one or two barber shop addresses, personal services.
Personal services.
Yeah. I think she replaced that with barber shop.
Okay.
But I think personal services... Oh, no, she's got one. So, going down, she's... What is this? This is still in there. Multifamily housing is still... Nursing homes out.
And we can just...
Daycare. I'm just checking out the ones that she's retained. Daycare is in there. Now, there's two levels. And by definition, the family group daycare, seven to 12 children.
It's not an X, though.
Yeah, that's right, too. But she's added daycare. Right here. And it would be a component, you know, some of the retail.
Well, that's true. We can add as well as take away, so...
Hotel parking. Do you see parking in there at all, George?
No, but it might just... I don't know if we have to...
Well, if it's a structure, that's the only thing.
Hmm. That's a good point.
Like a parking structure.
Yeah, garage.
Because most of these activities require parking, so they'd have to provide it somehow.
I'll put that as a question.
And I'll take right into the down course.
It's called locked in.
Daycare, office, studio, and service. Daycare, office, and office.
It's a copy for you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Certainly welcome.
Clean, clear one. Something is removed from the M1 from this list.
Yep.
An applicant can reapply or can apply, and it can be allowed by special use. Is that correct?
The way the ordinance is written now, yes. Because the ordinance provides quite a bit of flexibility, that if a use is not specifically listed, an applicant can provide for a special use permit.
Okay.
To allow it.
So, unless... Why don't we just run through the official list and see what we want to consider adding or removing? These are all the uses for the entire zoning. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. So, many of them are not going to be appropriate for the downtown.
Exactly right. But as an example, daycare might be appropriate, and it's not there now. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Actually, it is there.
Yeah. About two-thirds of the way down on the community.
Under nursing.
But I was looking at the two that says family group and family day child, so they're not... But, okay. All right. The first one is the student housing. Yeah, Chuck.
In regards to the permitted usage here, for the master plan is what allows this to happen, I understand, right? So, can we change the master plan just by saying we don't want this?
I don't think the master plan is that specific.
It's general.
It's very general.
It says it promotes, you know, mixed use within the downtown. It doesn't go into the details as to what type of use.
It's not locked into the master plan.
No.
All right.
Your master plan is also a guide, and your zoning ordinance is supposed to be based upon it, because it's a sort of a legal basis for your zoning.
You are locked into the master plan, but the master plan, as Diane said, is a guide. I mean, if you look at the front of the zoning ordinance, it says it's based on the master plan.
That's correct.
So, going back to student housing. Diane, I don't see it on Diane's list.
Well, I heard several people say...
Val has suggested that it be removed. I guess I'd be interested in some input from the rest of the board.
I think it would be good to leave it out also.
I think so, too. And I'm looking at Steve, and maybe I shouldn't, but I don't think any... I don't think any... It would be profitable for any developer to have it, so I mean...
Pretty expensive building to put student housing in.
Yeah. So, it's not...
Once you rehab it.
By itself, it just wouldn't happen anyway, in my opinion.
Well, I'd like to see it taken out of there, just on the chance that somebody might find a way to make it work, and I don't think it's an appropriate use for downtown.
Right. I would agree. Chuck?
I think we should take it out.
Let's knock it out, then. The next one is age-restricted housing for elderly. And assuming that the buildings could be modified to lend themselves to maybe some disabilities or whatever, people getting in and out, it also promotes people walking into downtown and patronizing the businesses of downtown. Those are just my thoughts.
I think as a component of a total build, it would be an appropriate use, and, you know, it doesn't have to dominate the development, but it would allow a certain component of older residents to be in the flow of things.
I think, George, at the workshop earlier, you thought we should have an opportunity for over 55 housing. That was one of your comments, and I think Chuck felt that was appropriate.
Right. In this situation, unless we think it's an appro... It is an appropriate use for the mill, the market will decide what will happen. But what all we're saying is that it's allowable, and a developer can do it if he found potential to have it happen.
So, I think we're saying leave it in. What about the... The next one is a nursing home.
So, that's assisted living we're talking about.
Not necessarily.
No, it could be.
Could be or could not be.
Again, I think that is a very expensive building to put... For that use. And it's tight in there. It's... I would think to rehab the buildings to serve as a nursing home would be just another layer on top of difficulty.
You know, I have strong feelings about it, but I don't see it as high demand.
Well, the thing is, we could knock it out, or we could take it out and attribute it as a special use permit, yeah.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, yeah.
No. You skipped over residential home.
It's not checked off in the M1.
Oh, gotcha. It's not. Okay.
And then daycare, it says any size.
You know, not knowing how somebody is going to develop the mill, if there were to be a high-density employer there that, you know, had younger women who had children that had to be...
They would offer daycare.
They might offer daycare as a...
On Timberland.
As an option, you know?
Yeah. I would leave it in. It's a flexibility.
Okay. So, I'm going to put it... I'm going to put it under commercial, I guess, for lack of another place to put it. Also, I wanted to mention that it's not only the daycare for children, but it could be adult daycare.
Sure. Yeah, that's true.
The next one that's checked is hotel. And I would think a hotel would have an issue with parking.
I tend to group the two, the hotel and conference center. Maybe it's just my experience, but either one, as John says, the parking might be an issue, but I don't know that you can predispose parking as being a knockout for either hotel or conference center. I've been to some cities where you had to take a cab to get to the parking, and it would seem to me that you could... You could probably accommodate it if there were a demand for it. I don't know if you want to throw it out or not. I think that as an adjunct to some of the other possible uses, certainly a conference center is a worthwhile...
Well, back with smutty nose, weren't they going to have a very small boutique hotel, or... I wasn't here at this time.
I don't remember that.
I don't remember that being part of the proposal from the discussions I've heard.
They were thinking of a bakery at the time, or something like that.
A brewery.
A brewery.
Restaurant, I think.
A pub and a restaurant.
Yeah, but I thought there was a boutique hotel. Well, that's what I heard first, so, okay.
So, what's the consensus here? Leave these two in or out?
I'd leave it in.
Leave it in.
Leave it in.
Okay. Health club probably ought to stay in.
Yes.
Do we agree with that?
Yeah.
Marina, since it's on the water, that...
Makes sense.
Should be in. Certainly retail should be in.
Material and office.
Office should be in.
Yep. Studio.
When you say studio, what does that mean, studio?
An art studio?
Yeah, art studio, architectural.
Photography.
Photography.
Performing arts, dance?
Well, it's a... I'll read it to you.
It'd be a dance studio.
It'd be dance.
Leave that in?
Sure.
Yep.
It's the workshop of an artist sculptor, photographer, or crafts person.
Most definitely, that's the kind of use that many people are envisioning for the mills.
Service.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yep. Yep.
Shouldn't have any definition of that, or... And that's pretty general.
Is there a definition in there?
Is there a definition in there?
Commercial use, which primarily provides services to people or businesses. There may be incidental retail or office activity, but the primary commercial activity is service. Examples include, but not limited to, beauty salons and barber shops. So, you could have cleaners. Coffee centers, cleaners.
Yeah.
Pet grooming.
That's right. Doggy daycare.
Restaurant, of course. We'd keep a restaurant and a lounge.
Yes. What about the thought that we would not allow drive-through windows for a restaurant?
Yeah, I think that's a practical limitation.
I think it's awfully tight to allow those, so I think it's best if you just don't have them.
We would add there no drive-through.
Yep.
Especially under the lounge.
Lounge?
Yes.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Wholesale. What does it say about wholesale?
Yes.
I don't have those definitions.
Selling merchandise to retailers, to industrial, commercial, institutional, professional business users, or to other wholesalers.
I can't imagine anybody would rehab the buildings and put wholesale in there, but...
Should probably cut it out, though, no?
Well...
Leave it.
I think you...
Leave it.
Want to leave it?
Yeah, we can always work around it.
That's not different from warehouse.
That's right.
Same thing.
Yeah.
Val?
The book exchange, isn't that sort of a warehouse facility? Yes, it is. So, I think that type of use would be appropriate.
Leaving wholesale and warehouse in?
Yeah. Light manufacturing.
You know, I have no objection to it if it's a, you know, a profitable thing for a developer to put a light manufacturer in there. I would want to limit the hours.
Well, a lot of the nanotechnology today is, you don't know what's going on, really. It's quiet and...
Yeah, that's true, too. The only reason in my mind for limitations of hours is noise.
That's not the same as light manufacturing, though. Technology and light manufacturing are different, aren't they? Is there a definition for that?
Yep. Hang on. Got a definition.
He hasn't. Mr. Will, and you're right on the ball tonight.
Fabrication, processing, finishing, assembly, packing, or treatment of articles or merchandise conducted solely within a totally enclosed structure and operated in a manner which is not offensive, noxious, detrimental, or dangerous to surrounding areas by reason of dust, smoke, fumes, odor, noise, light, or other adverse environmental effects. So, it could be putting component parts together as nanotechnology, or just, you know, it could assemble bicycles up there. I mean, I think it's... I think it's... Yeah, I think you need... I would keep it in.
Yeah.
I mean, what I was thinking about is everybody wanted smutty nose in there. What would you classify smutty nose as?
Yes.
I would call that manufacturing.
I would call that manufacturing, right.
So, light manufacturing stays in R and D?
What about manufacturing?
We don't have manufacturing.
We don't have manufacturing.
I know. I skipped the research.
R and D.
R and D.
I don't see any problem with that. If you don't see any problem, you're right.
Yeah, I think that should stay.
Well, the only thing I put on that is, I don't know, maybe I shouldn't. I was just thinking of, is a way to limit use of significantly hazardous chemicals or that kind of research in a building like that. And I don't know if that's right or not. Maybe I'm just throwing it out for a thought.
No, there is a lot of biochemical research going on, and...
And we would... That's true. So, you're saying it'd be...
So you're saying it would be... We could say non-hazardous research and development, something like that?
Yeah. Non-hazardous is a good choice of limits.
I'll work on coming up with a definition that we can administer.
Commercial amusement. What does that mean?
John?
Well, I think of Las Vegas when I think of commercial amusement.
Six flags.
Ferris wheels. Ferris wheels and roller coasters and go-kart tracks.
It's also an AM2 district.
Yeah, I think that's inappropriate.
Yeah, I don't think it's...
Yeah, I think that's...
An arcade would fit under that, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and I don't...
Yeah, probably would.
How about bingo?
Well, but now you go back to your, well, you put it as, you had theater. What happens if someone wanted to put a movie theater in there? Is that commercial amusement?
There's no other place for it than the definitions that we have here.
If it's not listed as permitted, somebody can always come in with a special use permit.
No, I mean, you put it on your list as theater.
Well, you put theater, which, that could be, that could be a broad range. That could be, you're thinking of drama theater.
Like go-kart tracks and...
As far as the commercial amusement is concerned, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we take that out and if something comes along, then it's a special use application.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Civic use, of course. Cultural use stays in. Place of assembly, is that...
It's an auditorium.
It's not necessarily religious?
No.
No.
But it could, it is a...
Could be.
It could be, right.
Any comments on either one of those? Place of assembly or educational facility?
They probably should both stay.
Yeah. Now we've done that...
Are there any other things we want to add?
Well, that's, that would be the next step.
Office complex?
The elephant in the room.
I'm sorry?
Office complex?
What?
Office complex.
We have, we have to office.
It's in there.
Office is in the professional office.
Yeah, right under retail.
Right under retail.
Okay, in the middle.
Yep. There's something on Diane's list that, start with multifamily housing, what...
Yeah, and maybe this is kind of a segue to my concept that I wanted to just throw out. I promised the board I'd come tonight with some kind of a proposal, an idea, and if you feel it has some merit, then, you know, we can fine-tune it.
I think it was a very interesting draft.
It's my copy. There it is. Thank you.
Draft.
Okay. As most of you know, mixed-use development is being promoted more and more in communities as one of the tools for smart growth. And we see communities moving away from rigid zoning, where you have a defined zoning district, and there are uses that are permitted, and you try to segregate land uses so that the uses can be compatible and so that you can, you know, set aside uses that are going to cause nuisances and conflicts. And we see more communities developing planned use, mixed-use development zoning. And it makes sense because it reinforces the historical development patterns in the downtown area. And, you know, employers want to, employees want to be closer to their workplace, and employees want to provide, try to provide some convenience to their employees to make life easier in this day and age when time is limited for many families. As part of a mixed-use development, we should be looking or thinking maybe about a higher density and view it not necessarily in a negative tone. We see that, you know, over, throughout history, higher-density development has been viewed as detrimental and zoning, one of the original purposes of zoning was to limit density to try to prevent overcrowding. And in many instances, that was not so much because of the density of the units, but because many of these cities, early cities in the 19th and 20th century, didn't have adequate sanitation and there were hazardous housing conditions. We see in, throughout the United States and many of our urban areas, that some of the highest-valued neighborhoods have higher densities with mixed uses. And a few to mention are, you know, Beacon Hill in Massachusetts, in Boston, Georgetown. Here in New Hampshire, you know, we see low-density patterns throughout and which has resulted in sprawl and kind of inefficient land use development and leapfrog development and really isn't conducive to an urban center where you're trying to promote public transportation. In our master plan, we talk about making our neighborhoods more walkable and making the downtown more walkable and creating a market for our downtown area so that, you know, we can have a lively and vibrant downtown. And certainly, higher density is, will make that market and make some more economic opportunities available. And looking at our master plan and our zoning ordinance, I see that there's a disconnect in some instances between what we've envisioned and what we've said we've wanted with, you know, redevelopment of the mills and what the zoning actually allows. In particular, the density requirement that we have, 20 units per acre, really isn't conducive for redevelopment in a mill area where you have existing buildings. It's more appropriate in the area where your greenfield, so to speak, your areas that are undeveloped where there's lots of land area that can be used for parking and support facilities and transportation. So I think what we want to try to do is take a look at our zoning and make sure that it does indeed encourage the type of development that we all are envisioning. And I think we have, you know, within close proximity to our downtown, we have neighborhoods that, you know, of higher density and that it's in close proximity, so we want to try to encourage the vitality of our downtown to just support, you know, the overall patterns that we have. And try to find ways in which we can encourage more compact development and encourage infill development within the area that we have. One of the concepts that I'm going to throw out on the table for discussion, and I left some blanks in my draft report here because I wasn't sure what exact percentages we might be striving towards, and I wanted to leave that kind of open for the board's discussion. But we see more and more communities are allowing things by conditional use permits, and this is one of the innovative zoning techniques or land use techniques that's available to us. And it provides greater flexibility to us in assuring that a development fits into an existing urban landscape. And it allows the wavering or modification of some of the requirements provided certain conditions are met. And I believe it's a flexible tool that the planning board can use to help direct the kind of development that we'd like to see in the mill district. And come up with a plan and work in partnership with an applicant to come up with something that meets the town's interests as well as, you know, is economically inviable without forcing the applicant to go to pursue a zoning variance in order to achieve a viable development. And as we all know, zoning variances aren't issued casually. They have to comply with certain rigorous legal principles that are very strict, and, you know, our zoning board adjustment really can't waiver from those principles. What, the concept that I'm offering for discussion would include a system of density bonuses so that there would be a base density that would be required for any development. However, if a developer comes in and goes above and beyond what our minimum requirements are, then they would be rewarded and would be provided density bonuses to provide some incentives to make the kind of development that's going to be advantageous to the community possibility and more viable. The conditional use permit would apply only to a specific project that is presented at the time of approval. The issuing body, of course, would be the planning board. This permit would not be transferable to a new owner, and there might be a stipulated timeframe within which the developer would have to utilize that permit, whether it be a, and I'll throw out some dates again, some, you know, 18-month or within a two-year timeframe. There would have to be a sequencing or phasing so that we would understand at what stage they would be coming in for site plan approval and would be securing their permits and then moving into the construction phase. As part of the conditional use permit, we might expect the developer to provide an overall master plan for the area. I know that there was some frustration when the zoning board was looking at the mill redevelopment proposal that came before it because there wasn't a clear picture on how all these pieces fit together. We saw some, some nice renderings of what the courtyard could look like, but we really didn't have a full understanding of what the overall plan was for the piece of property, where the commercial uses would be, where the residential uses would be, how that interrelated with parking and all the different elements that go into developing a master plan. The location of utilities, parking, and the actual footprint of the buildings that would remain versus buildings that would be removed. There really wasn't a clear picture in my mind anyhow how all of it was going to fit together. So as part of this conditional use permit, it would be required that the developer provide an overall development plan, not just of their particular little building, but, you know, parking is part of it so that we can have a glimpse of how all the pieces are going to fit together. And that wouldn't be a, an engineering drawing per se, which is what we typically get when we have a site plan review. It would be more of an artistic rendering, but also a conceptual plan so that we would have an understanding of what the overall concept would be. Within this proposal, I'm suggesting that multifamily housing be permitted as part of a mixed-use development, meaning commercial as well as residential, and that we may want to provide some limitations. If the planning board would like to see 80% of the building area put, set forth for residential, then that could be part of the criteria that we review and evaluate the development by. Another concern that I heard was, well, are we just talking about rehabilitation of the existing footprint of the building, or are we talking about new construction? And I spoke with the planner over in Dover today about a recent project that they reviewed with the Soya Mills. And when they developed the zoning, it was envisioned that these new density requirements would apply to just rehabilitation of the mill buildings. And lo and behold, the developer came in and wanted to build a whole new development. So I think we want to maybe restrict any wavering, if you will, or relaxing of the standards for building, redevelopment of the existing buildings as opposed to making it available for all new building construction within that area. Another thought is that, you know, we also would work within the existing building envelope and not, you know, allow the construction of building up or building additional buildings that would further increase the overall density of the buildings, not so much the housing units, but the buildings themselves, which could create more congestion. What I was suggesting is that there be a range provided, and instead of looking at it as so many units per acre, that there be a relationship between the number of square feet per unit and the lot area itself. So if you took, and I just threw out some figures here, these are all subject to fine-tuning by the board as appropriate. But I figured that there's about 100,000 square feet of lot area that's available based on the 2.25 acre tract that is currently in the mill district. And if you base 1,000 square feet, you come up with about 100 units per, for that particular tract. And the way this is being proposed is that that would be sort of the base and that if the developer wanted to build at a higher density, then they could build up to one unit per 800 square feet of lot area if they provide certain amenities. And this is where the density bonus would come into play. And please interrupt me if at any point you have questions or if you want me to, if you want me to hold until the end?
No, you're doing fine.
Okay, fine. I just didn't know if I was going too fast. And I've come up with five density bonuses that I thought made sense based on what I heard throughout this whole process. That there be a residential density bonus of 5% provided if the developer provides at least, and again, this number is subject to discussion and change, say 10% of the building area is put aside for public community and arts use.
5% of what?
5%. Okay, the base is...
Base is 1,000.
1,000 per unit.
In the example.
In the example. So if they increased it, and I brought my calculator...
I got it. Go to 900.
I got it.
Right. So for each increment, they could get additional units. And I think that with all, all the, okay.
Maybe I'm not, minimum 1,000 feet of lot area for each dwelling unit. I don't understand.
Okay. If you have...
When you say lot area, do you mean...
Let me just...
Floor area?
No, I mean lot area. You take, right now, what they said, it was 2.25 acres. Divide that by 43,560, and that gives you about 98,000 square feet of lot area. Divide that by 100... 3,000, that gives you 98. Okay. So that would be the low end of the scale. So if a developer came in and didn't do anything above and beyond what is suggested here, you know, the community use, the formal courtyard and so forth, then they would be entitled to 98.
98 acres of 1,000 square feet.
98 units.
98 units. I'm sorry, 98 units.
However, if they, they provided these additional amenities, it could go up to, and this is, again, these numbers are subject to change and manipulation or modification. Let's say if we went up to 800, so 98,000 square feet divided by 800, you could go up to 122 or 123 units. And I think that was the range that Mr. Chafee had provided to the board based on the developers' proposals that they've received.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Question?
Go ahead.
Okay. Just one thought. You're basing on a land area. And I'm wondering if you can't, the numbers come out nicely as far as my concept is concerned, but I'm wondering if you might want to rework it to be based on the existing building space. And the reason I say that is because, you know, you might run into a different situation where you have much smaller buildings on that same land area and the formula wouldn't work just as well.
I think I was going, yeah, the same way, is that I would take it away from the land area.
So take it away from the land area and base it on the building?
Well, it only applies to this.
With, and I'm just working this scenario based on the, and I'm just basing on the 2.25 acres that were presented. There might be more land that could be incorporated into the mixed use.
So you're looking pure housing units?
That would be the number of housing units.
Okay.
Right.
So we would be excluding anything else but bedrooms? In other words, there wouldn't be any restaurant, they wouldn't...
No, that, that, that's where, first off, we'd have to decide, let's say, let's say the planning board decides you want to see an 80/20 split, and I just throw that out. So you would, and it's, and if it's based on the building, then you take 180,000 square feet, we would have to rework the figures if we're going to change it to building.
I think it's a, about 125,000 developmental feet, isn't that what NCPTO was?
Let me look.
But that would be just up for the number of residential units. That would not take away from the commercial space.
So you still, you still have 20... So you still, you still have twenty-five thousand square feet of residential, not residential, but commercial or whatever.
Or whatever number the planning board feels is appropriate based on their discussions with NCDC.
Still be able to squeeze in a hundred and twenty-three units?
Somewhere, in this concept, somewhere between ninety-eight units and a hundred and twenty-three, depending on...
On bonuses.
On the bonuses for providing some amenities.
Right.
Well, I think if I, if I have my notes right, I think you said there was a hundred and twenty thousand or a hundred and thirty thousand square feet of usable space.
So we could base...
Now, I'm assuming when he says usable, that's...
Developable, developable?
Yeah, well, I mean...
We, we have to know that, we have to know all that, Diane, so that's something we got to get straight.
Yeah, but we're talking just a concept now. Is this a concept? That's interesting.
That's what I'm saying, but we got, that's one thing we got to get straight, that's what I'm saying. We have to know exactly how many building, how many square feet we have.
Does that exclude space for mechanicals or not?
Right. And I think, well, the hundred twenty thousand square feet was my understanding, took out the common areas, the stairwells, the mechanical areas, electrical.
Okay, that's fine, I just didn't understand that, that's fine.
I think you're going to find that there are probably, our developer representative can, can correct me if I'm wrong, but there are probably at least six different ways of calculating usable space. Net usable space, some includes the, doesn't include the elevator shafts and the stairwells, others don't include corridors, others don't include closets. It, it, it all depends on who's, whether you're using BOMR or you're using somebody else's method of deriving these. So I, I, I think the danger here, I don't want to get into a, a calculating mode so much as I want to get the concept out there, and I like Diane's concept of, of bonuses for, you know, a developer who is a little, has a little more foresight and comes out and says, hey, you know, we can, I want to see this turn into a community overall, not just a dorm. And so that, that achieves, that might achieve that more readily than, than anything else I've heard. And, but I, I, you know, I think George and I agree that it really should be based on the building rather than the land area.
And I can rework the figure, the, the formula to do that.
Well...
And tweak it so that...
The only reservation I have on that is if, and maybe I shouldn't throw this out, but if you take Val's, I think it was Val's idea, and I've been trying to think of it, is if you want to expand, instead of just looking at the mill district, now expand that. If you want to, I mean, one of my thoughts here is, do we want to merge, I was, I was trying to think of it, the B1 and the M1 districts?
I think, Mike, I think we need to look at it on a case-by-case basis, and I, and we need to have an overall plan for each lot, if it's going to come in under this type of a scenario.
Okay. I'm just, all right, let's focus on the M1, that was just an idea.
Not to go against Val's idea and George's support of it, but I, I think that if you, if you take into consideration that the mills exist, they are high-rise, probably nothing will be built that high again in this vicinity, whether it's just beyond the edge of the M1 now and enter the B1 or what have you, but the same, by the same token, if you encourage people to build up and, and create things that really don't fit in the area...
That's not, but that's why I said it has to be within existing building envelope.
Yeah, and then that, that's what, that's how, that's how the, that's how the, what we are asking for, we'd be bounded.
Okay.
Right.
Existing building.
Has to be an existing building.
Because we're only the existing buildings, okay, based on the square footage of the buildings, it's bounded by those buildings, and then we could talk about maybe flexing out the zone.
And that's why I put, and that's why I put in the caveat that it cannot, we'd have to work up a different system for infill development or new development, or new buildings.
Suppose somebody, I think that would be in the, would Joyce's be in the M1 district?
No, it's not.
That's in the...
That's, that's a good point, that we might want to incorporate.
Yeah, because you...
Because that should be part of that development.
You could get somebody who wanted to come in there and put a tower up, right on the waterfront. They're doing, they're doing the importance right now, they're doing it all over.
But that's...
Putting the water up?
A tower.
Tower.
In that area.
But that's not what the, the intent of this is to, for adaptive reuse, rehabilitation of existing buildings. It would not be...
The envelope of the building.
Within the envelope of the building, the additional density, we'd have to work up a different formula, I think, for new development and for infill.
Because then if you took the original building down, it wouldn't apply. I mean, these figures wouldn't apply.
And that is a concern, that we do something here that, in my mind, applies to just the mill buildings as they exist, their footprint, their height, the walls, structure, and so on. And it doesn't migrate itself out to other areas.
You may have to give some flexibility there for...
Yeah. Can you change the zone just to do that and restrict anything else that's going to happen in the next twenty, thirty, fifty years? That's what I'm thinking. It's nice to say that, but, you know, maybe something could get down the road, can, can the zones be changed that quick, back the other way? That's the way I'm thinking.
Through the process after, after one public hearing and, you know, the town council can change the zone.
The challenge right now before is, our, the challenge is the mill building.
Yeah.
And we need to focus on that. I think this has a lot of, regardless of what the numbers are, whether it's a hundred and twenty thousand square feet or, or whatever it is, I agree with Georgia and Peter that we keep, consider the square footage inside the building as opposed to the acre. I think that's probably a good thing to do.
Yeah, I agree.
But I like the concept. I think the concept is providing incentives to the developer, that he gets higher density, but he gives some things back. I think that's a, that's a good concept.
Right. And just, I didn't really go over the, the formula.
Yeah, why don't you continue, why don't you continue?
Okay. So, and I just, I threw out five bonuses that I thought made sense, and there might be other things, but there would be a five percent bonus if the developer provides at least, and I said ten percent just for discussion purposes, ten percent of the usable area for public arts and community use, which has been deemed to be very important to the town and to the NCDC as they've reviewed developers' proposals. That there would be a density bonus of five percent if there was a certain percentage of the area set aside as a formal public pedestrian area with a courtyard, some, you know, landscaping and some amenities, pedestrian-oriented amenities, which helps to integrate the mill project into the main street that we've been working so diligently to improve. A third density bonus would be for a plan that provides for the expansion or continuation of the Riverwalk as envisioned in the master plan that we have for the Riverwalk project. A fourth density bonus could be provided if there's an off-site improvement plan for pedestrian improvements that would include things such as traffic calming or pedestrian linkages, safety crosswalk, some kind of measure that would help to mitigate any concerns that there might be regarding pedestrian safety. And a fifth density bonus if the applicant rehabilitated the building in accordance with the Secretary of Interior's standards for historic preservation, which is obviously a major concern. And that was one of the, one of the proposals of the College LLC.
College Street, yeah.
Yeah, proposal that they would utilize historic preservation tax credits, which meant that they would be following those standards they'd be required to, to get those tax credits.
How about bonuses for alternative energy or green?
That's a good one.
Green, um...
Yep. Thank you, George.
Well, you know what I'm looking for?
Yeah.
I can't say it.
For leads.
Green construction.
Green construction, leads, construction.
So if you, just with what you have here, if I, I want to understand, if you start out at a thousand square feet...
Yep.
And you hit all of these, that's twenty-five percent, you could be a density of seven-hundred-and-fifty, is that correct?
Um, I came up with eight hundred square feet. I mean, five.
It's only twenty percent.
Oh, that's right. I'm, you're right, twenty-five percent, right. Seven-hundred-and-fifty.
Seven-hundred-and-fifty density.
Okay.
So that leads to the question, is seven-hundred-and-fifty as a size as that kind of density that, that we want to see in the mills? Recognizing that, I don't know how that would calculate out then, if you hit, if you hit...
Hundred-and-thirty units.
Would be a hundred and thirty units. That's, that was my question.
Ask and receive.
Yeah, my question is, does that still leave enough space for commercial mixed uses? All the mixed uses?
We would have to, that would have to be figured out as far as the four...
Because if somebody hits all these targets, you could end up with not having those mixed uses, and that we, that I don't think we want to carry.
And I think they were saying fourteen thousand square feet, but that also included the twenty-five hundred square feet for the commercial.
Yeah, and this ten percent, if you work off the hundred and twenty that's over here, ten percent is only twelve thousand.
Right, so we may want to increase it.
Only one, only one of these bonuses, if I can use that term, is specifically tied to a percentage of the square footage.
Well, maybe that's one of the places where you have to tweak it.
We'll have to tweak it, yeah.
Right. But as a concept, I guess, you know, I, I like the concept.
I think it's a great concept.
And then, as part of this, let's move on to, the developer would still have to demonstrate to the planning board, even regardless of what the proposal is, that it's not going to have an adverse impact on pedestrian safety, on traffic, on property values, aesthetics, historic qualities. And right now, in our ordinance for multifamily residential, it's permitted, however, there's a provision that it goes to the zoning board for a, would be a special exception, and in my mind, it made more sense to incorporate that process, if you will, into the special use permit that the planning board would, would issue, so that it wouldn't be, you know, too onerous on the developer, it wouldn't have to go to the planning board and then to the zoning board. So it would be part of the overall evaluation. And also, we, and I think this is an important piece, that there should be some kind of market analysis that demonstrates that the number of units is something that can be absorbed in the market and that there's enough market demand to support it. And that goes back to, you know, the importance of having some real figures backing up the numbers, so that we're not just saying arbitrarily, this number is what we want, but this number is something that is necessary in order to make the whole thing financially feasible.
Well, that, that would be a square footage number I would think that we would get from NCDC.
Yes.
I think also, and are you, are you using as a base here of a hundred thousand square feet, Diane?
Yes.
Your base, a hundred thousand, can it be less?
Well, it depends on what percentage we come up with. If we want seventy-five percent residential, eighty percent residential, I mean...
Who determines that?
Will, this board will make a recommendation to the town council.
The other thing is, we must also consider the fact that this, this project has to be an asset for the township, not a liability.
Absolutely.
There's no question. This should not count, this should, this should not cost us money.
Absolutely. So there needs to be a net positive benefit to the town.
Absolutely. I will not, I will not support anything that's going to be a liability to the township.
You know, one thing that Diane and I have talked about, when we get to that point in this whole process, is to have the town tax assessor come in and talk to us about the revenue generation and the taxes and so on that will be generated, and how, how taxes are established for something like this, and what the revenue generation and the positive impact, financial impact would be.
That would be...
The other thing that I would ask also is to have the Department of Public Works come in and tell us about the impact on the water, on the sewer, and so on and so forth.
Absolutely.
And then maybe even having Chief Molaske come in and talk about firefighting and the police chief and so on, because we, we need to understand all these things when you go to adding something like a hundred or so units to, to the town.
That's a hundred and twen, that's a hundred and thirty houses. Every unit's a house, I don't care how you look at it, it's a house.
Well, it might not be interesting. I understand what you're saying. It's a living unit and so forth, but I, I think, given the size, it is going to impact you, it's going to impact you more in some ways and less in others. In other words, there may not be as many people living in the, in the number of units.
I think we got to keep, keep out of the concept of saying, this, this is going to create taxes, we're just going to lower our taxes. I don't think this is going to happen. And I don't want to hear that at all, personally.
No, I, I agree with you, but I think it's important that we understand and the taxpayers understand what the financial impact is from the tax assessment.
Yeah, I want this to be totally transparent, right up front for everybody to see.
Oh, absolutely.
That's why we wanted to, to see a fiscal impact analysis done that looks at not just the school impacts, but impacts on municipal services, police, fire...
And that's why I asked you, whether that base could be, could be brought down. Maybe, maybe that many units is just too many units for us to handle.
Well, I was going to offer a suggestion tonight. You know, what, as a town, if we want to develop those mills, I know it's NCDC's responsibility to do that, we got to help start promoting it as well. And Chet, you brought up a lot of good questions, but if we, if we wait until a plan is before us, that's one next hurdle the developer has to do. And I'm trying to think of, what can we do to eliminate, what can we do to help promote, and I'm going to say, it's probably too negative to say this, eliminate obstacles, hurdles to a developer looking at those mills? And if we're all concerned about safety and fiscal impact analysis, could we, why don't, you know, the NCDC in essence is now the developer that's presenting to us. If they have funds, could they fund us, for us to hire a third-party consultant to begin to do that kind of fiscal analysis? So we have that information before a developer comes in. You know, we can, we can bound the problem here. We can say, with the numbers we have here, it's going to be X number of residential units, these kind of commercial activities, and make an assessment now, and maybe it's just too much, maybe we, we say it couldn't be done, in which case, why bother? But at least we'll have that answer now, before a develop, you know, at least have a concept of an answer before a developer comes in. So if a developer comes, does come in and starts promoting something, we can say it fits into the scheme.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. What I'm saying with you is, what's best for the town?
Chet, I'm not, I'm...
And then this is, this has to be argumentative.
This is an argumentative.
It is, it has to be.
What, I'm sorry?
It has to be argumentative. We've got to have an argument here.
No, no, Chet, it doesn't, it doesn't have, there is no, there is no argument for this project. There is no argument here. What I'm suggesting is that we do what you're asking now. Our normal process here is to wait till someone comes in and says, you have to prove, prove this to us. If there's a concern, we should start trying to get some of those answers ourselves. And what I'm promoting or asking, not promoting, suggesting that in this timeframe, since these questions are raised up, how many questions can we answer for ourselves now before a developer gets to us? That we can help, that we can find some answers and help NCDC promote the property.
But that's what Diane just said we're going to do. So what, what's the problem?
Yeah, but I think George, what George is saying is, we want to do it as soon as, proactively as soon as possible.
Before a developer gets here.
As an example, if we have another workshop on this in the next couple of weeks or whenever we decide that we're going to do that, we could ask the Department of Public Works to come in here and give us an update on the...
I agree.
The impacts.
I agree.
Even before NCDC is here, even before a developer comes in.
You could ask the tax assessor to come in here.
Exactly right.
I have no problem with that. I told you I didn't.
Yep.
We could have some spe, special workshop, looking at the impacts.
We can go to NCDC, we can say, let's work off the same set of numbers. Give us a set of numbers that equals the development of the square footage. If that's a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, then everybody uses a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, and then we can start doing our analysis here. We can have the tax assessor come in, we can have the Department of Public Works come in, and we can try and answer these questions before the developer and NCD comes back to us.
I have no problem with that.
Good, okay.
Not at all. I'm just saying that whatever, whatever is decided on, what decision we make, we, we are not going to make township a liability. We're not going to pay for something for somebody else to make money. That's what I'm saying.
I don't think there's any, any idea or intention to do that at all.
No way in the world I'll support that. I don't talk heavily against that.
And that's why...
I don't think anybody will support that.
...one of the criteria for issuing that.
Well, I'm not going to talk about the past, but you, you know what I'm talking about, I talk about that. That's what I'm watching in terms of what, what's going to happen with monies and how, and how it's being distributed. I'm very concerned about it.
Well, in the long term, if I understand the process, NCDC gets a... Well, in the long term, if I understand the process, NCDC gets a developer, they're sold, it's sold, and ultimately, NCDC goes away, the TIF district goes away, and the finances, the taxes flow to the town.
But don't forget that NCDC is a private, private firm. We really, they can, they can ignore us.
I think it's important to me...
Ultimately, if anything's done there, they have to go through the planning board.
They can ignore us.
Let me be a little bit clear in my proposal here. I am suggesting, and I don't know if it's fair or not, but I'm going to ask it anyway, that maybe we go back to NCDC and ask them if they can fund some of the studies that we want done.
All right.
And as, and just like we would, just like we would any other developer...
And that we do the studies.
They fund a third-party consultant that we, as a planning board, hire to do scope that we give them.
Aren't they going to say that's what they already had done with their developer that helped them with it?
But they were working for them, and I think what George is suggesting...
I know, I know. I'm just saying.
And I don't think the Cecil group, I don't think the Cecil group and those guys looked at what the questions were asking here in terms of safety, fiscal impact analysis. They looked at what it would take to develop those mills.
Good point. We're already on stage two with water, right? What's 130 units going to do for us?
Well, and that's why I'm, I'm suggesting that that might be...
We've estimated the water use, eight to, well, eight to 12,000 gallons per day. We have that water available for the mills.
How long, and what's going to happen if you have a drought, and why are we on stage two? Now goes the questions. See, that's what I'm saying to you. So you've got to be careful.
But as part of, we did an analysis when we were doing the review of the urban service boundary.
That's right.
We determined how much excess capacity was available, above and beyond what we currently use and what the design capacity, the wells are.
And that's why I wanted to keep that, and hold...
And there was 42,000 gallons per day that was available. We met with NCDC, they indicated to us, based on their, this was before they had a definitive proposal before them, they indicated they would need between 8,000 and 10,000 gallons per day for the entire mill redevelopment. And as part of this process, we can, you know, make a policy statement that we will reserve that for the mill projects, so that that will always be available for the mill, so someone else coming in with the development can't use serve that.
You can't do that.
Well, one of the...
That's what the urban service boundary is supposed to do for us.
One of the other things...
But you can't, you can't restrict that water. If a person comes in and wants that water, you must provide it for them, if it's there.
One of the other things, Chet, that we talked about last year, if you remember, is we got an update from the Department of Public Works on the status of the new water sources. And that's one of the things that we'll look at as we go through this process, is they're drilling some wells, they're re-injecting water over here, and so on and so forth. And I think we absolutely need to determine the status of that, and when that water, if it will, come online.
Absolutely. And don't forget, the people who are the water users, the water users are the ones going to be paying that price. Not many point, not the people on the outskirts, the users are the ones going to get impacted. Don't forget that. It doesn't include everybody. It's a very small percentage of people who are going to be impacted by that water usage.
Well, it's the people who are around the water system.
You start on that, because when you start piping from the western part of the town, that's going to cost millions to get those pipes over here. Not thousands, millions. And who pays for that? See, that's what I'm saying. You have to be careful what we're doing here in terms of units, how much water is available, and plus, plus your wastewater is now at what, 98 percent capacity? What's that going to cost, and you upgrade that?
That's another thing that we'll investigate. Let's, don't get hung up on this right now. Let's start, let's start the process.
I agree. I just want you to understand where my thinking comes from.
That's why...
And I wrote out four sheets, I could read to you, that would really make, tell you how I feel about it. And I want to develop the mills, but be careful how you do it.
Okay.
That you don't, you don't create situations where you're going to drive people out of this town.
All right. I think this is a very good starting point.
Yeah.
I think we would, maybe at this point, considering that the Celtics are coming on at Nite Park, and somebody wants to watch it.
That's why you wore your green.
I also want to say this to you guys. I think this should be argumentative, and I think that if you have something to say, it should be said, right out here for the people to hear it. And I think...
No problem with that, Chet.
I don't either. And that's why I think it's got to come out, everything.
But I don't know that we have enough information now.
I agree. And that's why I think you're right.
And that's what I want to, what I want to do now is move forward and kind of decide on the next steps. I think we made a very good start tonight. I appreciate Diane's hard work on this. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Can I ask a few, I know you want to get home and get to the game.
No, I'm not a basketball fan.
To study and to think about sort of...
I'm going to tie this out, or it's not going to be out the ground.
Peter's been outed there.
On your write-up.
Yes.
I just wanted to get clear in my head, how, how is this, how are we going to make this different than the process now? Right now, multifamily housing, residential, is permitted by special permit.
Okay.
But what cut?
We would get rid of the 20 units per acre requirement. This would be in lieu of that requirement.
All right, so that would be scratched.
Yes.
Okay. And then, for my own, again, conceptually, how we've done our site plans where we've had special use permits, we've gone through the whole site plan review, and then we've given them the conditional permit.
In this case, the concept is that you get your conditional use permit first.
Okay, thank you.
You develop your plan, you make sure everybody's comfortable with the concept, and then, and the bonuses and everything, and then you move to the more technical site plan review.
Which is one of the big problems the last time.
Okay.
Process, where you, you know, do your full-fledged...
Right, because it eliminates what happened the last time, because...
That we didn't have those answers to the questions.
Well, because they wouldn't at that point. They didn't want to invest in something.
Exactly, exactly.
So...
But we need something upon which to make this, information upon which to make this decision.
Yeah, yeah.
So hopefully, this will provide us with the information, so we'll make an informed one.
Yeah, but from a developer's point of view, you know, if you can get through the conditional permit, you've cleared a fairly large hurdle.
Yep, absolutely.
So you'd want to provide that information to do that.
Right.
Whereas, in the last, in the last step process, I can understand why they wouldn't want to put that much effort into, before they got further on down the line.
Any other questions for Diane? Any other comments?
Down the road thinking, some sort of a professional architectural illustrator who could probably draw concepts or whatever, you thought of something like that? Where we could show, where pictures worth a thousand words, where we could show people different things?
We could include that as part of, in addition to a conceptual plan, that there should be some architectural renderings to show the public how these spaces will...
Yeah, I thought what was presented before was very, very, wasn't enough there.
It's very big.
You know, there is a vast difference in the way developers present things, and even their outlook on things. There are some developers who will come to you and say, I need this number in order to make it work. You know nothing else about the whole concept of the thing, other than they need a particular number of units. And it draws lines, and unfortunately, people's heads, some kind of mixed metaphor, but sometimes people just end up bumping heads, and you never get any real progress. And there are developers who will, number one, come to the table with some flexibility, but number two, come with some information, and tell you, you know, we see this as a, you know, and be positive about what their approach might be with it, assuming mixed use, and what percentage they see of it and so forth, and why. There's a awful lot of enlightenment that can take place with us learning from the developer as well.
He can learn from us, too.
Yeah, well, that's true. I'm not taking that away, but I mean, we can't sit up here and think that we're the all-knowing ours. You're going to get some feedback, and you're going to say, you know, that makes sense.
Peter, I'm not going to sit here and listen to a developer 100 percent either.
I don't expect you to.
Yeah, I won't.
I expect a developer to talk to me, that's the point.
Well, we, we're trying to change the zone, okay? We're not interested in developers right now. We want, we're changing zones.
I'm interested in a developer.
Well, I'm interested in changing the zone.
Well, that's what it's all about.
Well, yes, but, but are you going to set something in and change the zone after? Or you're going to change the zone this or something?
We're going to change the zone, and we're going to put enough safeguards in there, so that we get a developer that's in the town's best interest.
We're doing so with the idea in mind that we want to...
That's why we're going to develop friendly as much as we can.
Right.
Can I just, this point I wanted to make, and that is, NCDC was set up as a nonprofit community development corporation, and they are working for the town. That's what their mission is, is to redevelop the mills. They're an agent of the town. And I guess I don't view NCDC in the same way, as a private developer coming in who wants to just, you know, re-profit from the land. They're, they're working on behalf of the town, and what the townspeople have said, year after year after year, that we want to see redevelopment of the mills in order to make our downtown, our community viable.
That's true.
And I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that fact.
But the voters have spoken also, in terms of how that's going to be presented by NCDC. And the impact of town, with that high density is not, they don't want it. So they have said it. So we can't ignore that.
No, I don't think we have any intention of ignoring it.
So you've got to be careful.
So the challenge is, is to find some, some common ground, something in between here that's going to work for everybody.
Which is also going to be an asset.
Regardless, some people will be disappointed on either side, but that's, we've got to do the best we can. So let's, let's...
It's not good enough, we've got to do the perfect. Do the best you can.
If you do a perfect job, there's going to be people who aren't going to be happy with what you've done.
You've got to do it so everybody accepts it.
That's the nature of the beast.
Well, that remains, we've seen.
I'm going to keep on pressing the button. Do we have a consensus here, maybe to have Diane ask NCDC if they'd be willing to fund?
Well, that's what I was going to do. Let's, let's go through a to-do list and kind of the next steps. One thing I think we need is, is a, this probably, if you can revise this with what we did tonight.
Yes.
And mark it as a draft, so we can look at that the next time we get together.
Okay.
Secondly, if we can get a number that's agreeable, that we can all work on, for square footage, if it's 120, if it's 125, but let's all work on the same number of square footage. So then we can take this kind of bonus, and then we can see, working with a number that's acceptable to NCDC, what they think. I think it's 125, you said it's 120, but whatever it is, do that. Thirdly, I would take George's recommendation and ask NCDC if there's an opportunity somewhere in their piggy bank to fund an independent third-party for us to do the analysis of the tax and fiscal impact, the water sewage and utilities impact, safety, and fire and police. And this is not an in-depth kind of study. It's better than a 20,000-foot view, but it's not a 100-foot view. Because there's a, there's a time factor here. We want to move this process along. NCDC told us at the town meeting, or our planning board meeting last, last time, that they're in talks with the developers, so we need to, we need to move along as they're moving along. Now, those are some steps that we're doing. Do you have any other things that we have here that we want to do for the next time? Does this, does this meet everybody's needs at this point, these things?
I will rework my concept to include building, usable building space, as opposed to land area, and rework the formulas to come up with something.
And add George's suggestion about greener, environmentally friendly.
Yes.
I think, if I can speak...
Sure, certainly.
That everybody should be thinking about the number of units. There's 100, we started with 151, if people didn't want it, is 130 going to be acceptable?
Well, you know, the idea is, 151 wasn't good, and 40 is not enough, so, you know...
Why isn't 40, 140 not enough?
40, I said 40. 40, that's allowed now.
It's not economically viable.
That's what I'm talking about, is, I think the number of units is going to be important.
Well, that's, that's why we need the figure of how many square feet, then we start with, if 1,000 is what Diane suggested, 1,000 is good, then you've got 125 units, and it's 125,000 square feet, but then you start working on the bonuses.
That's also why, that's also why we want to start doing those studies, because we could come up with 140, and we do a study that says, 140 is too much of an impact.
Yep.
At this point, it would just be pulling a figure out of the air.
It would help us to bound the problem.
I'd like to also, Diane, that the total amount of footage, you can't absolutely say it, the footage, but I'd like to know as close as possible the amount of footage we have to work with.
Well, that's what we're doing. We're going to get that.
We've been told 180, there is 180,000 square feet of gross floor area in the mills currently. That's what we've been told. And the figure that Arlen threw out last time was somewhere in the order of 120,000 square feet of usable space.
Usable space.
I'm going to take a look at some, Peter, you mentioned some different formulas in which you can calculate what's net buildable area versus gross buildable area.
Okay.
Perhaps you could share some of your expertise in that area with us.
Well, remember, there are some changes that are going to have to take place. The way that building was originally designed, there might be a stairwell at either end, and now you're going to have to create additional stairwells, and they will draw from the...
Need mechanical shafts, mechanical rooms.
We'll look at some different formulas and try to come up with a figure that we feel is realistic.
One figure that we're all happy with.
Exactly.
You definitely have to put elevators, there's no question there.
Yeah.
Right. And I'll see if there's some kind of magical rule of thumb we can use.
All right.
Okay.
Do we want to set a date, when we can meet again?
Yeah, I was just going to get to that.
Do you want to put this on the agenda for the next planning board meeting? Or do you want to do it sooner?
I find it, if I may, Mr. Chairman...
Go right ahead.
I find it difficult to focus on doing all the application stuff that we have, plus doing zoning on top of it. It would be helpful to me if we could, you know, have our regular meeting, when we have our regular meeting, and maybe have an additional workshop in two weeks.
It's a very good idea.
The next planning board meeting is the 8th.
8th of July.
Two weeks from now is the 1st of July, but that's the week of July 4th.
Right.
We could meet two weeks from now, but I don't know about people's vacations.
I'm ready.
I'm good.
So the first...
I'm good.
I have to be careful, I have some...
That would be July 1st.
I said July 1st.
July 1st.
Yeah, I've got something, but I think I can change it. So...
7 o'clock.
July 1st, that's Tuesday, July 1st.
Yep.
Yep.
7 o'clock.
And 7 o'clock.
And I will make sure the room is available for us.
I was just going to say, here, Diane.
Please forgive me again for the room scheduling problem.
So, before we adjourn, is there anything else that we need to discuss?
Do we need an opportunity for public comment, or?
Any public comment from the vast audience.
I was wondering why a guy from Madbury is sitting here watching your zoning.
Oh, no.
No, we're not. We're not wondering at all.
We understand why a guy from Madbury is sitting here watching. That's no secret.
The fiscal impact idea, pursuing that, I think is, is very, very proactive. It includes all the impacts, but it also includes the multiplier effects so that you come, it's literally a science now. It's a formula. You get to, to answer the question, does this have a net positive fiscal impact to the community? That's why you're thinking about using that as an engine to boost economic viability in the town. So it's certainly a worthy thing. And I, and I don't want to pick on this, but the idea of the feasibility study, which is a different concept of, because it goes to absorptions and things like that, it would never be able to take into effect because a feasibility study grasps the market at the moment. The, there's a lot of square footage. This is going to get phased. As I was listening to the various uses that, that might not be considered or might be considered, it is amazing to me, and I'll use the example of that, have that amusement.
Emotional amusement.
I thought the same thing. It's a throwaway, until I had to go up in Summersworth and ask for a variance because I got an amusement user who came in. And I'm not advocating this, but it was a haunted house. But it used a basement piece of the mill that was so unrentable under all other circumstances, which, these mills are used as incubators for a while as well. So the more expansive in the uses allows for a greater period of time to stabilize them. Because we're talking about, in the end game, some number of units, and I appreciate that. But getting to that number of units, which has the positive impact, requires the most expansive uses to stabilize the building. The fiscal study, feasibility, I'm, I'm sorry, feasibility study really is, is a capture of the time. And I could, I could write it tomorrow and tell you that if, if the number was 125, we're going to say no, from a feasibility study, because the absorption is going to take 11 years because it's this market. So you're really not getting good information on that. Believe me, we will be doing feasibility. Any developer would be doing feasibility studies. But as a criteria, as it relates to a special permit, it really might not be what you think it could say to you. Because it's going to say no under this market conditions. But that isn't to say that a developer would still say, well, look, I'm going to take, I'm going to take 40% of this building, and it's going to be uses like it has been, or it's going to be uses that are in your, your permitted uses. Because not all the units, and not all the retail, and not all the office is going to get built in the first two years. It just isn't going to happen. Too big. Those are, those are my perspective from a developer's point of view.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
George.
When you said the feasibility study, you, I guess I'm trying to recollect through our discussion, I was asking for a feasibility.
It was just, it was just brought up as a possibility, as a consideration to do a feasibility study to, because what you, the, the, the end result is, is an appropriate end result. So if it was 115 units, is that even feasible in the market? Well, it isn't in this market, but, you know.
In two years, it might be.
Feasibility study isn't going to say to you what it's going to be like in six years or four years. It just doesn't. It captures a moment, and it says how long it would take for you to get there. I just don't think it's really a criteria for a special permit use.
What, it's like, because you were setting market.
And this is actually in our ordinance right now. For multifamily housing in this zone, one of the requirements is the preparation and acceptance by the ZBA of a market analysis which demonstrates the feasibility of added multifamily in the community, which already has an overabundance of multifamily housing, sufficient to ensure reasonable expectation of ongoing occupancy of the units to support maintenance and upkeep of the property. In other words, if it's in a bad market and the developer can't demonstrate that there's strong market demand for the project, then, and that, you know, and all tied to that is whether or not there's a reasonable return on investment, it's going to keep his project viable, then there's a question as to whether or not the zoning board would want to grant that, because it could become a liability to the town as opposed to an asset.
I presume if you got a.
Does that?
No, and, and I appreciate that. I, I don't think that's, I think that's new construction in the real scenario. Makes lots of sense because we're creating, you know, it's not an adept, I mean, I, we had this discussion in lots of communities because that's exactly the situation that you have, is you've got this big empty building in the middle of your town. The, the way you develop them is, first of all, you have to get the master plan. We've got to get the number, which allows us to get the financing. But the feasibility study is not going to back you up on that, because they're going to say, well, your, your window is three years. You have to absorb all of those units in three years. Well, we're never going to do that. What we're going to do is we're going to take part of that building, and it's going to become light manufacturing. It's going to be, there'll be a t-shirt place in there. There'll be all of these other things that'll just hold the space, keep it warm, keep it dry, keep it going, while we're developing one of those buildings or half of those buildings. And those are the successful phasings that when we're allowed to do that. We're going to end up doing feasibility studies, believe me. But we're, it's, it's towards the financial community to get our financing. But we're going to be showing some of that space being used as, as $6 square foot leases. And that's the feasibility we need to set. But it isn't going to justify the 115 units out of the box. But the developer, the equity partners, have to believe in that as the end game. That's the risk reward. They're going to run that risk for that period of time. And if they win, they get the reward at the end, if you get to the number. If you don't, you still stabilize the building. You just wait longer for it. But a true feasibility study to justify a master plan coming in, I don't believe you'll ever, I don't believe you'll ever have it. I don't think you'll have a successful feasibility study. You can have a fiscal impact study.
Right.
Clearly have that, because that formula allows for that expansive timeframe and those multiplier effects. I, I didn't mean to get bogged down on it, but.
That's very interesting. That's very interesting.
Very interesting point. And also, I mean, it is a snapshot in time. If a feasibility study was done today, it would probably be pretty grim. However, if you're looking to, to a development opportunity two or three years down the road, as the economic cycle hopefully has an upturn, then it's going to be a more optimistic projection.
That's, that's the financial model that we put, that a developer would put together internally in order to get the financing, get the equity into the project, clearly.
Do you mind, do you mind if I ask Steve another question? I mean, you've listened to us tonight. Do you have any, probably biased, but thoughts on the progress, the pro, the direction we're going in?
I, I think it's a very viable process that, that's being proposed here. I, I'll, I'll just give you a couple reactions, but I reserve the right to change my mind because I actually thought about it to the depth that, that certainly Diane had. I'm not so sure I'd worry about net usable or, or some other kind of net number. Why not just go to gross number, and there it is? Because we'll, we'll sit here and argue about what net is later on. And that's why I didn't even mind, I think, you know, again, it's, it's a fixed number when you tie it to the land. It doesn't matter, as long as it's tied to something, as long as you can create a basis, then you start from the basis. But I would caution away from net because, like Peter said, there's a, I've got seven definitions for net, you know? Net usable, usable, and rentable, and all of those. So.
What, what's your take on basis? What do you mean by create a basis?
The basis from which then you can start to apply bonuses.
So, okay.
So there's an incentive.
Base.
So you agree in terms of us determining the square footage in terms of how we could use it?
Somehow determine what your basis might be.
Okay.
From which then you would, you would incentivize, if that's the right word, the developer to do things that you want.
To start.
To get, then get density bonuses, which then brings the whole thing together. And that's really the special permit process.
Right.
Clearly. And it's a, it's a great process because it allows for flexibility. So from that, I, I think it's terrific. And.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Interesting.
Appreciate it. Is there any, any?
Quick question.
Sure.
Once again, was there a page through three of Val's?
Oh, yes. Page one. Yes, here. You must not have gotten the full package myself.
Sometimes it's just the, the name.
I know. You have four or five pages with all the headings and stuff.
Anything else? We've got the meeting set. We've got the, the next steps.
Could we have Steve available to give us his talk once in a while, does what he did?
You learned something, didn't you?
Yeah, we learned something.
On a volunteer basis?
On quite a bit.
That's up to Steve, I think.
If he's a, if he's a.
Would you be available?
If he's a planning board grouping, I mean, he could.
She's kidding to me.
Glenn's going to do it. She's going to have some competition.
She wanted, she wanted my excuse tonight.
Though I, I appreciate Steve's input. I think we and Steve have to be cautious because I think he's an interested party.
Yeah.
So, but.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Okay.